Okay, I am going to call the public order to the donation twenty-five thousand from the Jack and Dorothy Foundation for the LMS Project. Oh, there any public comment about this in the room? If you are online and you would like to speak on the donation of twenty-five thousand dollars from the Jack and Dorothy Byrne Foundation for Lebanon Middle School Project-Based Learning, please raise your hand. There is no one online. All right. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and I'm going to open up the board meeting for August twentieth, twenty twenty-five at six thirty-one P M. All right, and now we can stand for the pledge of allegiance. Public comment will occur during the public comment portion of the meeting and is done via raising your hand remotely or in person. During public comment, once acknowledged, please state your name and board so that it can be included in the minutes. Please limit your time to three minutes. Public comment is governed by policy B. Do we have any additions or deletions agenda? It is on the agenda, but not in your packet in a supplement is the nomination report. So we will be taking that later on in the agenda. All right, I'm going to open up for public comment for policy. Do we have any comment in the room? Do we have any online? If you are online and wish to speak for public comment, please raise your hand. Do you not have any public comment? Okay, moving on to item five, we have a student report. The student report should start our first meeting in September, which I believe is the eighth. All right, the tenth. Okay, all right, so moving on to item six correspondence, we did receive some correspondence from Constance Reed Smith. Constance speaks to the possibility that we should reassess a grade of C being considered competent in our competence-based learning. She wonders why reassessment opportunities are capped at seventy-nine percent. And she's noting that V-Lax, the minimum competency and to receive credit is eighty-five percent. And you can continue reassessing for a higher. And she will also be meeting with her superintendent. So. That, all right, so done with correspondence. Moving on to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from non-public on August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
All right, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, Joe made the motion and Leila seconds.
Tia, we have two members that are joining us remotely, so we should have them say their names and if they are alone, and then they can cast their vote. That's all right. We're here together.
Okay, all right, can we have the members speak? Lil, you can go first.
I'm Lil Man and I am alone.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Ash.
I am Richard Ford Burley and I am also alone. And I believe R S A ninety-one A also requires us to state for the record why we are not able to be there in person. And the reason is I am not in the country.
And I am not in the state.
All right, so all of our votes will be roll call because we've got two members, voting members who are online. Okay, so we have a motion to approve the minutes from non-public on August thirteenth from Joe, seconded by Leila. All right, and we need a roll call vote. Leila, go ahead.
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Lil?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right, so that is unanimous, passes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the public hearing on August thirteenth?
So moved.
All right, Joe moves. Can I have a second?
Second.
Leila seconds. All right, roll call vote. Leila?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Tia, winter, but Kevin?
Yes.
Lil?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes, you can call me Ash, I think it's fine.
I almost did. All right, I'm gonna call you Ash because that's what I want to do. All right, now I need another motion to approve the minutes from August thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. This is the Lab S B minutes draft.
So moved.
Joe moves.
I second, but I did have a correction.
That's right, okay. Sorry, Leila, could you say the correction for the record? Our note taker is not here and you will be taking this from the recording.
On, this is page fourteen printed in our packet, but this was, and the committee update section, that's twelve. At twelve E for the Student Wellness Advisory Committee, it said Leila stated they met. I believe that's Carrie stated they met.
Okay.
So that's twelve E of section twelve committee updates. That was my only correction.
All right, thank you. All right, so we have a motion from Joe and a second by Leila with corrections.
Yes.
All right, so we'll do the roll call vote. Leila?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Lil?
Yes.
Ash?
Yes.
All right. Item seven B. Can I have a motion to approve the nominations, renominations and acknowledge the resignations and retirements?
So moved.
I second.
All right, Joe moves, Leila seconds. Do we have any questions or comments? No, all right, so we'll do a roll call vote. Leila?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Lil?
Yes.
Ash?
Yes.
All right. Item eight. S A U Leadership Team Updates. Now we will get an update from our superintendent. Great, thank you and good evening. The first item for the update is the update from policy G J Fab, which is our our policy that allows our employees to have their children attend for the Lebanon School District. This is the twenty-five, twenty-six school year report. I did add the numbers from twenty-four, twenty-five. Also included in the report, which I thought was important, was to start looking at the town of residents. And I also put the grades in there as well too. So I anticipate us talking about this policy as the legislative session starts kicking up in the fall at the state level in terms of open enrollment and to see where things go with that legislation. Any questions on the J G Fab report? All right. So just a quick opening of schools update. It's been a really busy and productive start of the week and we are excited to welcome our students a week from today. This week, our leadership district team met for a multi-day retreat where we unpacked the twenty-five to twenty-eight strategic plan and translated year one actions into building and S A U level goals. Our teams calibrated around our new teacher evaluation system to ensure consistency and support across the building. And we also went over some legislative developments and discussed next steps in terms of policy and communication. Today, we held our new staff orientation and tomorrow we are welcoming back all of our staff for professional learning. And we're really excited to welcome everyone back. We actually through our nomination report, all of our teaching positions are full. We were unable to secure a Latin teacher for the high school. So the high school is going to be contacting the students that were enrolled in that course to make alternate options for this year. We remain actively recruiting several paraprofessional positions across the districts. So if anyone is watching out there and you're an interested candidate, you should visit our website for details and application instructions. Finally, in exciting news, I'm proud to share that Lebanon High School was named number two high school in New Hampshire by U S News and World Report. Last year we were number four. I just want to note that this recognition reflects the hard work and dedication of our students, our families, teachers, staff and partner schools across our area. Growth and achievement are truly our team sport and we want to thank everyone contributed to this wonderful outcome. Looking ahead, we are finalized and ready for the opening of school next week and excited to launch our focus on the vision of a learner and graduate and the specific actions in the strategic plan. We will continue to keep the board updated on our implementation progress, staffing status and any policy implications from the legislation. That concludes the superintendent update for this evening. Any questions for me? Thank you, Amy. Now we'll move on to the business administration update.
You don't hear from me twice in a month. I have no particular update right now, just working on a D O A twenty-five.
All right. All right, so now we're ready for C, Director of Student Services update. Everyone, if you want the table to sit or stand, it looks like you have a few items. Make sure you push the button to speak and speak close to the microphone.
All right. Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. I'll keep this brief. Did everyone get the handouts? Okay, great, so I won't cover all the bullet points. But this is really just intended to be a snapshot of some of the major areas of focus, at least from my lens for the coming year. The first three items are really about creating more efficiency in terms of processes and trying to move away from paper copies of forms. And in my world, it's a very paper-heavy endeavor, so we're trying to move toward Google Forms and the like with Tyler's support. And so far, everyone is, you know, very much welcoming that. The fourth, the fourth bullet point, the next three bullet points are really, really focused on three different committees that we started or began to develop last year that we're gonna, you know, do the real work of it this coming year. The first is the Paraeducator Usage Committee, and this is really focusing on how we're utilizing paraeducators in our district. And are there efficiencies to be had there and so on and so forth while still meeting students' needs. Briefly on that, Tim and I were just talking before the meeting and I think there's roughly an average of three additional paraeducators being added every year for maybe the last ten, eleven years. Something along those lines, and I believe we added two for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. But again, I think those decisions were made based on student need, but the purpose of that committee is to just take a look at that, especially, you know, in light of, you know, what we're expecting in regard to the budget and sort of our fiscal responsibility. The next one is Pre-K Committee, that Elizabeth Bailey really gets the credit for that. She is our assistant principal at Mount Lebanon School. We're looking at options as we prepare for the next budget year. You know, looking at how to offer high-quality programming while also dealing with an increase in referrals from early supports and services and referrals from local pediatricians and things of that nature. So this is something that a lot of districts are doing in the state in response to increased referrals for three-year-old students. We have a very tiny, very efficient, nimble paraeducator onboarding committee. It's myself and two other people. And so we're actually getting something done, right? No offense to large committees. But we worked on some documents that are really gonna help our new folks coming in, especially people that come in mid-year. That's really the, really the focus there and just try to clarify and beef up our onboarding process for new paraeducators. So. What I'll do too is I'm gonna pivot really quickly to the Paraeducator Handbook. Again, I'm not gonna go through this, but I just wanted you to be aware of it. Amy was gracious enough to let me present this, if you will, or at least push this out to our building principals and staff last year. And then this year, we were, we were able to present it and I used it today, in fact, with our new paraeducators that came on board. And it just, it's a, I think it's a nice document that really can act as a resource for our new folks. And it wasn't a document that I created independently. It was, it was created by the school districts in the region as a group. So there was a committee of special ed directors, Sonape, Hanover, Care Sarge and a few others. We came together and created this a few years ago. So it seemed to go over well, but obviously we are open to feedback and making improvements as always. Again, I'm gonna skip around. Again, if there's things you want me to talk about more, please, you know, bring me back to that or ask questions. I will touch base quickly on the last bullet on the front page, so the five oh four template. We're trying to streamline that. Again, we're moving to, moving to a little bit of a, you know, more digital version of that with some more, you know, dropdown menus and things like that. That the purpose is to create a common template that lives from, you know, that goes from K to twelve, right? So there's no surprises to parents when their, when their children are moving up through the levels. And we're gonna try to be a little more consistent in the language we use to describe accommodations and things of that nature so that there's not a learning curve when a kid moves from eight to nine and so on. That's been received well. We're meeting with the five oh four coordinators tomorrow evening. And we're gonna be reviewing that again with the intent to roll it out day one. And in closing, oh, let me touch on some financial pieces here. So a bit of good news. So Special Education Aid, we received an additional one hundred thousand dollars above what we expected to receive this year, which is great news. Sarah Eaton, admin assistant to the, to my office, gets a lot of the credit for this. She's doing a lot of the work behind the scenes to make sure that happens. And so again, that's nice to see when that came in because that does help offset our lackluster Medicaid year. So it doesn't fully make up for the, for what we perceive to be a low year, but, but it certainly helps. Regarding Medicaid, we talked about Medicaid at length at our administrative retreat on Monday. You know, the message that, that certainly came out of our office and our principals and other admin echoed is that this is a priority, Medicaid reimbursement. And so we, we have some trainings set up and we actually have a consultant that's gonna come on and help us, you know, improve in that area and maybe even exceed what we were seeing for reimbursement in previous years. There's a few areas that the state has freed up that we can now potentially get reimbursement for, so we're investigating that. So fingers crossed that that goes well. The last thing I will mention, oh, and on the sheet I put an S P and then a number or a series of numbers. Can anyone guess what that means? Amy?
Is it the strategic plan goals?
Absolutely. Well, you cheated because you told me to do that. A great job though. So the last item is, we do have a cost-free online therapy program that's, that's happening. I spoke with Beth Sprague today at the high school. She actually attended, you know, the new school year training today with the other districts, again, in our area that are part of this five district cohort. And we're excited for that. It's, it's three years. It provides mental health services through a licensed mental health counselor to kids remotely. And it is absolutely cost-free for the first three years. And so it seems like a no-brainer to me and Amy was, again, supportive of that and let us take the ball and run with it, so.
Can I, I'm just curious about that. So then how is it funded?
Right now, it's, it's funded, there's, the organization is called Safe Schools New Hampshire. And I believe their funding is coming from a series of grants that they've applied for. There's also a research component to it around, you know, the efficacy of online therapy, you know, with, with students in schools because it is a bit of a new, new development. So that, that's my understanding. I'm not intimately involved in the funding of it though.
But the, the organization, I forget what it was.
Cartwheel?
Cartwheel, yeah. So that's, but that's not the group you were saying is doing the funding.
Right, so yeah.
Someone behind the scenes is paying cartwheel.
Correct, so Safe Schools New Hampshire is an organization that Mark Phillips started. He's a former attorney that lives in the area. And then we looked at a number of online counseling services, Cartwheel being one of them. And, you know, I had some conversations with like the folks in Salem, Massachusetts, and they were very pleased with that service. And so as a group, we ended up going with Cartwheel. So they're the vendor.
And but, so they are, it's not like they're providing the service for you. They are getting paid.
They absolutely are. Yeah, yeah, sorry.
There is a lot of grant funding right now for tele-mental health research. So I'm not surprised. It's probably a block grant for three, something like that. And then after three years, we'll have that decision of whether we like it or not. That would be my expectation at least.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Question. Um, just, this is just for Ben. So this program, will this be by referral or will kids be able to access it on their own?
That's one of the unique things about it. It's, it's gonna be both. So we can refer as a staff. And then the very unique part of it is that students can actually self-refer. We will have knowledge of that, that referral, but it, we offer, the program offers both, which I think is.
How will the students know they can access?
I'm sorry, I keep looking up like. I'm sorry, can you say that again?
How will the students know for if a student chooses to go the route where they would like to access this program, how will they know they can do that?
Right, I mean, that's Ian and his team, that's gonna be the message that, that goes out, I think, primarily out of the counseling office. We don't have that nailed down yet, but it's just about advertisement.
And I think we can reach out to, through emails to the parents, so the parents of the high school students are aware of this as a resource as well.
Yep, and maybe it's already been advertised a bit, so.
I also have a question. I cannot hear you, Ian, I'm sorry.
Ian's mic is not working.
Repeat. I can imagine it going out in the, in the newsletter, in the weekly, but not everybody reads the weekly. I can imagine making it available to students through advisory announcements. And again, I don't know if we do that in subtle fashion. I don't know if we broadly advertise it. I don't know. I think that's certainly a topic of conversation for our first student assistance team meeting. So we'll, we'll find a pathway for that for sure, so kids know it's a, a resource for them.
And I think you can probably put it on the new website on your counseling page, department two, as a link for.
We'll, we'll put it out in multiple, multiple ways.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ian.
I would think.
I do have.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ash, go ahead.
So I wanted to know two things, one about privacy and the cartwheel program. This is presumably very highly regulated, but I just wanted to know some details, if you have them to offer.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, Ash. So we, for whatever reason, I think Lebanon, we had the wherewithal and the motivation. And so we sort of took the lead in getting this vetted by legal. So Luke Webster, one of our Drummond attorneys, went back and forth with the cartwheel folks. And, you know, we developed a contract that we were all comfortable with. And so, you know, Amy's looked at that as well as the other superintendents in the cohort. So we, we feel pretty good about it, Ash.
Okay, great. And the other question was, and I know the answer is almost certainly no, but I just want to rest my, rest my worries. At no point will children be talking to A I, right? They will only be talking to humans?
Correct.
Okay.
It will only be licensed mental health practitioners.
Yes, is it worthwhile getting like overview of this for the board in some fashion?
Yeah.
I would be fine with that. I would, especially with the research component, these, these students have HIPAA, FERPA, IRB approval has to be part of this. With the, they are specially protected as minors, as students in schools. I'm sure there are lots of things laid out that they already have, that they would probably be willing to provide.
Yeah, I mean, it's, Cartwheel is definitely not a fly-by-night organization. I think it's based out of Cambridge. They've been around a while and there's really only a handful of vendors that offer or have done online therapy for, you know, higher ed and public ed. And we looked at one, I forget the name of it, you know, right now, that was really immersed in higher ed and colleges around the nation. And then Cartwheel seemed to at least have some feelers out in public school districts. So we ultimately pivoted to Cartwheel and so on. But yeah, I'm happy to, you know, share out our experience with it, say, in a few months.
I think it'd be helpful to have those details as we know that we kind of have a three-year timestamp to then look at if this is something that becomes added to the budget or if this is something where we have to send back to the block to shop around to see if anybody else wants to give us a free deal. But, you know, there's a lot of money for telehealth right now because everybody wants to be the first and the one. So it doesn't surprise me that we've gotten this awesome opportunity for our students and thank you so much. I had separate questions if, and nobody else is still on this one. You did mention that it's great that there is a kind of an extra hundred thousand dollars above the expected, which is wonderful. Are there kind of anything in the trends of what happened with the Medicaid reimbursement so that we can kind of have that in our mind of what might be shifting with that?
Yeah, I certainly thought long and hard about this and, you know, and there's quantifiable data, I think, to support my view of it. But, I mean, one of the big, one of the big, I think there's probably three main areas or two main reasons perhaps why, why it happened. One of the main reasons is that Lebanon switched to a new Medicaid billing vendor for this coming year. We used to use a company called M S B and then we pivoted to a company called Relay for this, for this past school year. And so that, that contract was signed a little bit late and it was a newer company that is still entering the market, if you will, in terms of being a third-party biller for districts. And so there is, there was, there was really no training for our staff until later in the fall was one, one issue. It was a brand-new system for our staff to learn. And then another issue that, that we uncovered pretty quickly was that the, all the data that we had in the former company was not, it was not readily shared with the new company. And so there was, there, we didn't have, in regards to student information that we needed for billing without going into too much detail. We didn't really have that until late fall. And so we weren't really doing a lot of Medicaid billing until mid-year. And so that, that certainly contributed to it and I think that was a big driver, you know. I mean, I think part of it too is I, you know, like I said to the superintendent, like I will take ownership of this absolutely because it's my department. And I feel like what I could have done better is been more of a, more of a champion for this particular issue. And it's, it's definitely a tedious undertaking, Medicaid is. It's very, it's very separate from working with kids and why people get into the business, right? Those of you that do your charts? Those of you that do your charts?
Yes.
Right? And so, you know, what I've learned out of this year is that it really takes someone championing, championing it from the top. And then that trickling down to our building level administrators.
Is there kind of maybe a process in line as, you know, if it's only, if it's still a new system, obviously, this is not going to be completely smooth sailing understandably to the team yet. Is there kind of a process of kind of educating on some of the nuances that were learned about from this last billing cycle, our billing year?
Yeah, yeah, ab- absolutely. In regard to the vendor in particular, we, we have another year on our contract, but I want to revisit that. Tim and I have talked briefly about that. For me, the jury is still out if they can really deliver what the previous vendor was, was, was delivering. And then we, we've also brought in a gentleman, again, not, not a, not an expensive consultant, but very expert in Medicaid, Dan Cordier. He's an attorney in the state that his career has been Medicaid to schools, pretty much. And so he's, we've got him booked to do some trainings in the fall and then be on consult for us the rest of the year. So we're hoping with some of Dan's guidance that we can, we can resolve this. Did I answer your question?
It did. Billing is weird.
Yeah.
And do you have, if you have this, do you need to do quarterly plans and statements for every student who receives Medicaid? Is that part of the paperwork and billing? I just know that's part of mine. And like for people to understand how much administrative work, a lot of children's therapists feel like they're doing paperwork and seeing kids on the side. It's that extensive for Medicaid.
Yeah, it's, it's certainly challenging, you know? And a lot of the, you know, the folks in the field that do the bulk of the work or the logging are our paraeducators and our related service providers, speech, OT, school psychs. And so they do, they do their logs once a week or once every two weeks in the, in the online system. And then the quarterly billing and things of that nature is done by our vendor, Relay in this case. And then Sarah Eaton is really the point person on, on Medicaid for the district.
We've also put some structures so our building administrators who supervise pairs are making sure that those hours are getting entered in. Tim and Ben will be checking in too, so we can watch those Medicaid hours and making sure we're kind of trending where we should be inputting as much data as we can. Yeah, because getting behind is also very strong. You want to protect them also from that.
Yeah. One, one last point on Medicaid, and I promise I'll leave. The, one of the trends, there's a, there's a funding change happening with Medicaid 26, 27 school year that's unrelated to the federal Medicaid discussion. It's the way the, it's the way the districts are reimbursed. Dan, the consultant, will be talking with us more about that. It's not going to change a lot of what we do in the field, but it's gonna be a different reimbursement structure. I know Tim, Tim knows about that as well. So again, we're just trying to go with the flow in terms of the never-ending changes that are Medicaid. And then my last point is some of, some smaller districts, there's also a move in the, in the state where some districts are doing a cost-benefit analysis of what they receive in Medicaid versus what the time that service providers are billing, right? And some small districts are finding it's not worth it. I don't think we're anywhere close to that, but there, that is a trend in the state. Okay. Thank you.
One, can I ask one last question? Did you mention we've been adding three paraeducators for how many years?
About 10. Don't quote me on that, that's a ballpark.
So we have 30 additional paraeducators than we had 10 years ago?
Roughly, yeah. I think 11 years was.
What, and then what's like the average tenure of a paraeducator? Do you maybe, sorry, that's probably, you have that on hand? Guess what's that turnover we see?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm confident we don't have that metric. But since, I had given Ben the chart before this meeting, but I was trying to find it again. Generally, since when I got here in 14, we had around 70, 75 or so paras. And we're up to about 105. That's where that 30 number comes. I've been here living. But I have no idea. That's a good question, what's the average tenure? We have some that stay a long time, but some that are in and out.
I think, I was curious about that as well. Sorry, Lil, do you want to go?
I think we're gonna say the same thing, Leila. I think it'd be good to find that, to at least check in with HR and figure out how long our paras are sticking around, just because if we're talking about this committee that Ben is discussing about the uses and the efficiencies, it would be good to know. That seems like a piece of information that would be helpful for that committee at the very least.
Yeah, and I was curious about that. The committee will just come back to us with all this kind of information. So that's great.
Yep, I mean, I think, at least in my view, we, we see this as a multi-year, you know, process, so.
All right, anything else?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ben. Thanks for all that work. All right, we are moving on to the Director of Communication and Community Relations. Please welcome Jack Rooney, our new Director of Communication and Community Relations, who started with us on the first week of July, I think July 7th, right? All right, welcome, Jack.
Yes, thank you. And, yeah, thanks for having me. So, yeah, the, the purpose, I think, of this is, is mostly to introduce myself to, to you as a board and let you know that I'm here as, as a resource for the entire district. I always, I've kind of come into this role with the 30,000-foot view of that it is my job to make sure that everyone in the district, students, parents, teachers, paras, administrators, everyone has the information they need to do what they need to do so well. So obviously, that stretches into a lot of different, different things. And so similar to Ben, I, I put together a kind of a one-pager. I won't go through every single bullet point, but wanted to just point out a couple of highlights, I guess, of the stuff I've done in the month and change I've been here and stuff I'm working on right now and stuff I'm looking ahead to, so. And then, of course, I'm happy to, to take any questions on any of that or anything I don't touch on. So just to dive in, I know you heard from Tyler last week on the launch of the new website. And I just want to be clear, I played a very, 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 very small role in that compared to the mountains of work that Tyler and Kate and the entire IT department put into that. But was responsible for a couple of the pages on the website and also for kind of communicating the change with the entire district. Just today, I finished my last kind of building level meeting. So I now I've met with the administrative teams in all four schools just to get to know them, talk a little bit about how we'll be working together. And then just earlier today, I, I finished creating for myself just a little spreadsheet with each of the schools and any sort of outward-facing communication that they produce and who is responsible for producing or maintaining that. So that will just help me know if, say, a webpage hasn't been updated in a little while, I don't have to wonder who should I be bugging about getting some fresh photos on that site. I know where to go to and, and who to work with on that kind of stuff. In addition to the communications piece, the community relations part of my job involves coordinating substitutes and volunteers in the district. And so I, I inherited some, some paper applications for those. And similar to Ben, I like to get away from paper as much as possible. I, I find the online record keeping easier for myself. And I, I hope it also kind of reduces potential barriers for people to apply to be subs and volunteers. So both of those are now online applications. I do still have copies, PDF copies, that we can print out if people need a hard copy for any sort of accessibility reasons. But for the most part, that will all be handled online. I also recently, last week, finished up the school year calendar magnet, which I believe was distributed to the board. And I know is out to all of the schools now to distribute as we get back to school. I made a couple of slight tweaks to the, the old design. I, I made or worked with our vendor to make the actual calendar, the dates a little bit bigger, easier to read. Those magnets also have, have always had the, the school phone numbers to call in and report absences. Each of the schools also now has a dedicated email address for that, so I added those to the magnet. And then, you know, a five-by-five-inch magnet can't possibly contain all of the detailed information of the school year calendar. So in the bottom right corner, where usually the month of July would, would be on the, the calendar layout, obviously, we don't really have any school dates in July. So replace that with the QR code that goes directly to the full detailed calendar on the district website. I also, at the request of the board, which was passed to me through Amy, put together a one-page transition sheet, which has kind of the basic information on, on what families need to know as their students are transitioning between the different schools in the district. So whether they're starting kindergarten or whether they are Grantham students, starting at the middle school, or going from the middle school to the high school. So I finished that. And it wasn't until tonight that I realized, I know I've sent it to Amy. I don't know if that's been distributed to the board as well yet. So I can make sure that gets to you all. And then last thing, I just wanted to, to call your attention to on, on the stuff I have already done is, is kind of serving as a editor consultant, second set of eyes on a, a number of district communications that I've probably already lost count of. My background is as a newspaper reporter and editor. And so that's something I've already offered to all of the building leaders and everyone in the SAU office as well, that I am always happy to serve as a second set of eyes. And, and so I've already done that a number of times. And I'm always happy to do it. And I come at that also with a, an approach of making sure that the information that we are sending out as a district is easy to understand and in accessible language. And so trying to be as clear as possible when we're sending out information so that people aren't left feeling confused about what is going on with the schools. So on the kind of second side of the, the page here, a couple of ongoing projects. One that is kind of just, just coming to fruition yesterday and today is that, you may know, we use a vendor called Smore for the school-level newsletters. And we kind of switched the plan that we're on with Smore so that now all of the building leaders who are using it to send their regular newsletters won't need to send a link to, they won't need to send an email with a link to click on the link to get the newsletter. We can just send the newsletter in the body of an email. And then this plan also allows me and a couple other folks at the district level to kind of see all of the newsletters that we're producing in the district. So again, it makes it easier if they need me to read through it before it gets sent out. It's a lot easier for me. And then it's also got a lot of cool features that I nerd out about in terms of the analytics of who's opening it, how many, which links are getting clicked how many times. And, you know, that can all provide useful clues for, you know, what sort of information do people really need from, from us as a district? I am also working to kind of find ways we can, can be more efficient in keeping the district and school calendars up to date. So the online calendars are, are under my purview now. And I've made sure that I've, in my meetings with building leaders, I've heard that one of the issues in the past is that there are occasionally discrepancies between the district calendar and the school calendar. And so whether it's a time or a location or a date. So I have kind of verified for the first two months of the school year that those are all uniform and correct across the schools and the district. And I've just set a, a weekly calendar reminder for myself to double-check anything coming up the next week or two, that there, there's, there haven't been any changes. I am also gonna be working with Tyler and the IT department because our new website vendor does have its own internal calendar function. Currently, we're still using a, a Google Calendar that feeds into the website. But as we get more familiar with, with the new website platform, there is a way, hopefully, that we'll be able to, to run all of our calendar events through the website so that if it's changed on one calendar, that change goes through automatically to any other calendars that it's on. So that would hopefully eliminate that issue of having any discrepancies with the online And then, yeah, since we are getting back to school now, we actually have our first substitute orientation tomorrow morning. Diane Estes, my predecessor in this role, has graciously offered to come back and, and show me the ropes on that. And so, and we've had a couple of people applying as volunteers with the district as well. So I'm working on, onboarding all of those folks with an eye towards always kind of taking a look at how those processes might be able to run more efficiently, more smoothly, especially in those two roles of substitutes and volunteers, making it, you know, as easy as possible, really, for anyone who's interested to, to apply and, and to go through that process. Of course, in accordance with, you know, our priorities as a district and with, with board policies. But just making sure that, that we're, we're, you know, being able to, to get as many people who want to help in the district as we can. And setting them up for success when they do come and work with us in some way. And then last thing I'll touch on before I, I take any questions you might have is just a couple of upcoming projects, stuff that's on the horizon for me. So I inherited a draft of a, a district-wide communications plan, which I know is, is, is built into the strategic plan as well. And I am kind of going to be reviewing that draft more in-depth. I've, I've read through it, but I want to kind of go through it with a fine-tooth comb and, and kind of update it and adapt it to what I think makes sense. I've also, I've joined the New England School Public Rela-, Public Relations Association, which has a ton of resources, other school district communicators throughout the region who have produced similar documents in their district. So I can kind of get a sense of, of general best practices and what sort of information those, those plans include. I do certainly intend for our plan to also include a little bit of branding work. So you may have noticed with the new website that the pencil logo, the old pencil logo is kind of being retired. We currently have kind of just a circle logo that is SAU88 that I think we view as a little bit of a placeholder. This is, I think, an area where the, the two pieces of my job, communications and community relations, can really merge into one. As the new school year starts, we really would love to work with, with students in the district, especially high schoolers, maybe some middle schoolers interested in design work to, to come up with some designs and then have some sort of a process where people can kind of collaboratively choose, you know, what, what we want our new district logo to be. And then also just developing, you know, stuff, communications materials that are consistent and professional-looking, that incorporate that logo and make sure that we're using consistent colors and fonts, just so that when there is communication from the district, it, it looks and it feels official and it, you know that it's coming from the district. I think that can be, be really helpful. And then the last thing that's, that's on my radar, that obviously won't be for another couple of months, but looking ahead to the annual report. Again, in, in my days working in, in local journalism, I've read dozens of them and, and have lots of thoughts on, on how they can be more informative, engaging, and really provide not just the school community, but the entire Lebanon community with kind of the information they need about the district and especially as they're, you know, going to the polls early next year on our warrant. So I will leave it there. But again, my, my contact information is on the top of, of my one-page report here. Always happy to take questions, comments, feedback, including right now. So I will turn it over to you.
Whether you have any questions?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
Lovely to meet you, Jack. I'm Leila.
I'm Leila. During the logo shift and branding work, I hope there might be a slight cost thought in the back of your mind. There was recently a rather large company that changed their logo in the Upper Valley without understanding how the printing cost for what they designed was actually a massive mess compared to what they did with the number of colors they selected in the actual design. I'm sure you're aware of this, you're in journalism, but it feels like it's helpful to be said now, while, before you start the process. Thank you so much.
Of course, yeah.
That company doesn't have me looking at the numbers. You get one color as long as it's black.
But for accessibility standards, logos should be able to work in both high contrast and regular, and in black and white, as well as in color.
Yes.
And, Jack, I wanted to say, that transition document was actually a suggestion from the district-wide PTO group that wanted to say, when you move into the district, or you come into the district for whatever reason, if you can have something that says, this is what you do, depending on the age of your kid, depending on the school of your kid. And so I'm really glad that that has come to fruition, because I think parents will really appreciate it. So thank you for working on that. And thank you for all of this, actually, being very clear and transparent about what you have been doing. We really appreciate the updates and the thoroughness.
I also wanted to ask, this was a great advertisement of your skillset, and it makes me wonder if sometimes in our policy meetings, we will hem and haw over the implementation of a policy, because what it really hinges on is our ability to message the changes to the district. So in those cases, might it be okay if we invited you to a policy committee meeting or two?
Of course.
Wonderful, thank you.
You don't know what you just agreed to. Just joking.
Hiya, Tim.
Okay, anything else? Comments? All right, thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Okay, so unfinished business, we're going to go over the second reading of these policies before I hand it over to Ash. Are there any that anybody wants to pull out, discuss? No? Okay, Ash, you want to take it over?
Yeah, that's fantastic news, because that makes the motion easier. So what I need is a motion to approve the policies listed in 9A, 1 through 26.
So moved.
I'll second.
All right, Joe moves, and Leila seconds. All right, so we'll do a roll call vote. Leila?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Lil?
Yes.
And Ash?
Yes.
All right, it passes unanimously. And then Ash, go ahead with the withdrawals.
Yep, exactly. And so I need a motion for the withdrawal of the policies listed in 9A, 27 through 30.
So moved.
I will second.
All right, I have a motion from Joe, second from Leila. We'll do a roll call. Leila?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Lil?
Yes.
Ash?
Yes.
All right, it passes unanimously. Now, 10, new business. So discussion action, so this is a suspend board rules per legal, new policy priority required.
Sure, so on, thank you. So on recommendation for our legal, New Hampshire passed a New Hampshire bill of parental rights that went into law on July 1st. And we are required to pass this policy, A-B. And then with recommendation from our legal is to supplementally create a procedure for this parental notification bill. So I'm asking for A to vote to suspend the rules, and then we can discuss and go from there.
Okay, so I need a motion to suspend.
So for the record, the motion will be to suspend the rule that we will have two readings. So this will go straight into policy, is that correct?
Correct, and thank you for bringing that up. What also need, once approved, needs to be posted on our website, our employee handbook, and our student handbooks.
Ash, why don't you go ahead and do that? Because you just articulated what we need to do.
Okay, then I move that we suspend our typical approval process, which includes both a first and second reading, and move straight to second reading for policy A-B and policy A-B dash R. That would be the Bill of Parental Rights and the parental notification procedures.
I will second.
Ash moves, Leila second. We'll do a roll call. Leila?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Wait. Oh.
Go ahead. Oh, sorry.
No, no, that's okay. We'll go ahead and do that, and then we just need to, that's fine. I have a, I'll talk about it after. Go ahead, Leila, sorry.
Okay, I'm a yes. Kevin?
Yeah.
Lil?
Yes.
Yes? Ash?
Yes.
All right, go ahead, Lil, sorry.
No, no, I was out of order. It's fine, go ahead, you could keep going, you're on the right track.
Are you ready to move on, then, to the approval of the $25,000 donation? Or do you still need to discuss the Bill of Parental Rights?
Well, no, that first motion was to suspend board rules.
Suspend the rules, oh my gosh. Okay, you're totally right. All right, I'm moving too far ahead. Okay, so I need a motion to accept the...
Yeah, to pass.
Policy A-B, which will be A-B-R. Okay.
So moved.
Okay.
I will second.
All right, Ash moves, Leila seconds.
Do we have any discussion of this policy?
Yep, we'll have a discussion now.
Yeah.
So I just have a couple, I mean, I have a couple of, sort of, there's a lot of his and her instead of their, outside of our normal language, which is fine, we can just clean that up. And then the only question I had was on A5, A1-5, which is to inquire of the school or school personnel and promptly receive accurate truthful disclosure regarding any and all matters related to the minor child, unless an immediate answer cannot be provided no later than 10 business days after the request. So that's really confusing, I'm not sure what that means, so...
There should be a comma after provided, I believe.
Okay, unless an immediate answer cannot be provided, comma, no later than 10 minutes, okay, that makes more sense, love it.
I've added it, I'm actually in the system right now, so I'm making these changes as we go.
So that's, actually with that comma, that does make more sense. And I'll just send my other corrections to you, Richard, later, because they're not...
Thank you. And just for transparency and clarification, we did, I did use just the template from the School Board Association, which was approved by the legal piece of that, which, if you look at this policy, it's taken right from the law.
The stuff I'm talking about is just the fixing of the, again...
Absolutely, we can get that changed, thank you.
I'm just curious about the language around nine, which is, if this is required, which to opt out of health or sex education and any other objectionable material. It's just weird.
I said fourth, I want to say 126, 11, 9B and 9C, yes, unfortunately.
We have to use that, like, specific language? You just say to opt out of objectionable material, it's a little bit...
It's specific to health and sex education and any objectional material. And I know Karen Dubois is here as well, she's, we were all versed in this bill, and then the specifics that we actually have to go and to speak to our staff about. And one of the changes, too, is that we're going to be requiring syllabi to be provided for courses, so parents, if asked, they will know what books are going to be covered in all of the classes. So this particular law does certainly have a big impact on our educators in our schools. Karen, if you want to...
I have just a quick question about that. Sorry, just to complete the thought, I think Amy really covered it, but the distinction here is that for those specific areas that are delineated in number nine, we're required to provide a specific opportunity to opt out, as opposed to simply, in all other areas of the curriculum, we need to make sure that parents have an opportunity to come to know what will be taught. And then, on our district website, we have to post this bill of rights, so that parents can come to be aware of their rights, rather than it's only the specific items delineated in number nine that we need to provide a specific opportunity to opt out. That's the reason to list them.
Got it, thank you.
Somebody who chooses to opt out is listed in number nine, this is part of our requirement, do we make that up for them?
Shh, go ahead, Karen.
Either way, go ahead. The law says that the parents need to notify the school that they wish to opt out, collaborate with the school to determine an alternate program of study for the student at the parent's expense.
Other questions or comments? We had a motion, correct?
Yeah, in a second.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Leila?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kevin?
Sure.
All right. Lil?
I'm a yes.
Ash?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so that passes. Moving on to 10B, discussion action, can I have a motion to approve the $25,000 donation from the Jack and Dorothy Byrne Foundation for Project-Based Learning at LMS?
So moved.
All right, I have a motion from Joe.
I'll second.
All right, I have a second from Leila, any questions or comments?
Sure, I just want to commend the staff members, Mr. Harkins and Ms. Brake, for pursuing this grant to expand project-based learning at LMS, and providing opportunities for place-based outdoor learning. And of course, I want to thank the Jack and Dorothy Byrne Foundation for their generous support of all of our students at the Lebanon School District.
That money will be used well, thank you. Staff who made this happen. All right, and so, we have the motion and the second, so we'll do the roll call. Leila?
Yes.
Carrie? Joe?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Lil?
Yes.
Ash?
Yes.
Okay, passes unanimously. All right, we are on to C, discussion action update to the handbooks for the 2025 to 2026 school year policy, per policy J-I-C-J. The first one we will review is the MLS-HSS Updated Language to the Student Family Handbook.
Sure, this is a just brief language within changes for them, this is for the elementary schools, and for those that are listening online, J-I-C-J is, will now be the cellphone ban policy that was passed by the Governor Ayotte, that requires a bell-to-bell cellphone ban.
I have a couple of suggestions for changes to this wording.
Great, let me find that page, and...
Number 139.
It's actually quite convenient, because you can tell which is what's been changed, because it's in a slightly smaller font than the rest.
All right, go ahead.
So I have a couple of kind of comments. First, a question, does, do either of the elementary schools use Chromebooks and ask students to bring in earbuds the way the middle school does?
Most of the elementary schools have headphones that are provided by the school.
That are provided, okay. So that's fine, then, to include earbuds as personal communication devices, because the policy does not explicitly state that. Two things that I think should be changed, during instructional hours should be clarified, because it does include lunch, and parents might not understand that from this.
Sure, we can clarify that, in the state language instructional time, that's included lunches, but to make sure, I think we should just use bell-to-bell.
Yeah, I think that that's, there's a reason they went with that at the state level, I think. And the other thing I would suggest very strongly would be to actually say somewhere in this bit, the policy name, J-I-C-J, so that parents could look up the full policy if they want to.
Yes, we can include that, because in their handbooks, too, they reference and hyperlink those policies in there. And Ash, I'm looking through my pile of policies, and I thought we did include earbuds as something that wasn't allowed.
What we said was that ones that are connected to prohibited devices are not allowed.
Earbuds that are connected to prohibited devices, thank you.
Because we can't very well ban earbuds connected to allowed devices, if that's a part of the, if there's an approved curricular use for those, for example, at high school...
I guess, and if it was related to the medical disability or English language. Okay, I can give this changed back to the elementary school?
There, I also kind of noted, noticed when I was going through the rest of the handbook today, that there are a number of changes that have not been made to the handbook for MLS, including, you know, the names of the people on the board, and the Karen's title, and the use of the word tardies instead of late arrivals. And I'm just wondering, when the next chance for updates to the handbook comes around, whether or not some of those things can be changed?
Sure, if you actually could email me those specifics, so I could get them directly to the principals, and I will, some of those changes should have been made last year, after our rounds of EC and full board, and I'll make sure those get updated, and so they're easily accessible to our community with the right language and information.
No matter what you do, you have that.
Do you have any other questions or comments? So I need a motion to accept the MLS-HSS Updated Language to Student Family Handbook as amended?
So moved.
All right, second?
I'll second.
All right, so Joe makes the motion, Leila seconds, we'll do a roll call vote. Leila?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Lil?
Yes.
Ash?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Now we're going to move on to the LHS Updated Language to the Student Handbook, LHS Cellphone and Fraction Language. Do I have any questions or comments?
I have one question.
Okay.
So my question is about the fact that the phone needs to be picked up by a parent or guardian at the end of the school day. So my question is really an equity question, so if both your parents work full-time, having to take time off to come to the school to pick up a cellphone at the end of a school day, I just wonder if we have allowances for that? Like, what is the, what is our allowances for parents who are working?
We always try to be measured and reasonable, so we'll work with the parent on that. What we tried to do in identifying four steps, I guess, to eventually receiving what we hope doesn't happen, but anticipate that it might, which is an out-of-school suspension if a violation, if a person continues to violate the law. That's a good question, Lil, I think we'd have to, you know, look at each case individually on that, and work with the family, and we might have that meeting when it's convenient for them to do so the next morning, give the student the phone, have them come in at their convenience, and then skip, you know, skip the picking up piece and go right to the meeting.
Great, thank you.
Lil, I would also add that I think we could probably accomplish some of the same goals as an in-person meeting with, you know, with a phone call, you know, a conference call, if they were not able to come down to the school, you know, to accommodate them.
Perfect, just wanted to throw that out there, thank you.
And I was provided with a question that I will put out there for clarification... And I was provided with a question that I will put out there for clarification of whether the LMS will have a similar infraction model on electronic devices to LHS.
I can, I know LMS had a bell-to-bell cellphone ban last year, so they were a little bit pioneers in this and their handbook is accurate with those consequences, so we didn't need to update those consequences for this board meeting.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, thanks, guys. All right, so do I have a motion to accept the LHS Updated Language to the Student Handbook, LHS Cellphone Infraction Language?
So moved.
All right, I got a motion from Joe. Leila seconds. All right, and we'll do a roll call. Leila?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Lil?
Yes.
Ash?
Yes.
All right, and it passes unanimously. Moving on to D, discussion action update to the Program of Studies for the 2025, 2026 school year. That's okay.
Thank you. These are, LMS, we'll start with the LMS Program of Studies first. We had told this board in June that we would update the Program of Studies to include their new essential arts, unified arts classes, so those are included in the packet.
Do I have any questions or comments?
I have a question.
Yep, go ahead, Lil.
And I'm fixing to where my question is. Okay, so my question, this is probably a Tom question. So, is he there?
Yes, yes.
Yes, I'm here now.
There's no Tom on this. Okay, so my question is, if you look at, in seventh grade, they're required to take, let's see, hold on, I gotta find it. In seventh grade, they're required to take art design lab, get up and move, and industrial arts seven, correct? Those are foundational classes? Right. And then in eighth grade, they will take three of these thirty, three of the four classes, advanced guitar, art design lab, industrial arts, and eighth grade cooking. But the art design lab is exactly the same description as the art design lab in seventh grade that they're required to take. So are they, will, is everybody choosing to take everything except for art because they're the same exact class or are they not the same exact class? How does that work?
They are not the same exact class. I don't know how the course descriptions got in here, and I'm sorry about that. We can fix that and I can share that information with Amy to share with the board at some point, but there's an art design seven class and an art design eight class and they will be different. I should know how...
Like right now, they both say they're going to be a collage book and they're going to do...
No, I'm looking at it now here too. Yeah, I don't know, that's, Mr. Brenninger was just here too. I wish he stuck around for a second, but...
Okay, we just need to clarify that because they're two different.
They will be different, yes. They're two different classes, but I can't give you more information than that, but I'm sorry that I'm not sure how that got copy-pasted incorrectly.
That's fine, that was just my question.
Okay.
Okay. All right, Tom, I've got one question and this is from John. So he wants to know, do we need to define what makes a course foundational in the Program of Studies for LMS?
We can, we certainly can, sure.
There you go, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm gonna make a note on my phone just because I don't have a...
Go ahead, I can repeat that if you need me to.
No, that's all right. Define what foundational means.
Right.
Yep.
And that was the only question that I... Do we have any other questions or comments on the LMS Updated Language? All right, can I have a motion to approve the LMS Updated Language to the Program of Studies?
So moved.
All right.
I'll second.
Okay, Joe moves, Leila seconds, we'll do a roll call. Leila?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Lil?
Yes.
Ash?
Yes.
Okay, and then the LHS Updated Language of Program of Studies, do we have any questions or comments with that one?
These ones, these changes that were included in the packets by the administration reflect some of the changes from our policies and directly related to the 306 revisions and the requirements for that.
Okay. I do have a question, clarification. What is the reasoning behind the removal of the C minus at LHS? If anyone would like to speak to that?
That recommendation came out of the Policy Committee. We didn't disagree with it. We feel that earning a 70 is good work. There are other schools where a 60 is still the baseline grade that you can get to pass a class.
Most schools.
Most schools. I know we're steadily moving and then it retracts and moves forward again with regard to competency-based grading and it looks, it looks differently in different places. So, you know, we have a whole group of students who struggle in that 68 to 71 range and we felt that by earning a 70, which we feel that puts them in good stead and we agreed with the recommendations out of the Policy Committee. I'm not sure if there's a direct connection, to be honest with you, between 306 recommendations. C minus is, C is an average, is an average grade and the C minus is less than that. So that's, that might very well be inadequate answer and we're happy to continue to process.
I think with that, to that point, with the 306s, there's direct language of us having to define what proficiency competency is, right? What is the basic level that you'll earn credit for? So that will be our floor. And then our next work is, there's language in there that has, we are going to need to move forward with this with the Education Committee, is what does mastery mean? So those are two terms that have been embedded in competency education and then are just more outlined in the 306s. So that C level is what we're saying is that you, you're proficient in that, that subject area and that you're able to get a grade for that.
Yes, and we have students who reassess to get that grade and work hard to do so. So we feel they're deserving.
If I'm remembering rightly, Amy, I believe the discussion centered around the fact that proficiency was the term used to be the one which you actually get the credit and it seemed as though a below-average grade would not render one proficient.
Correct. I think that was our, kind of our discourse around that was like if we are saying that you are proficient in something, what does that actually equate to? And, because that really is the standard that we're going, that we're studying.
That was a logic that was explained to us and I was less than articulate in trying to get there, but yes, that, we agree with that. So that was a helpful decision made by the, or recommendation made by the Policy Committee or the Ed Committee.
It was kind of by both.
We were talking about that. We are not quite sure where it originated, but ultimately it's a policy that I assume came out of the Ed Committee, but perhaps not.
There's some overlap in members.
Yeah, and one of those 31 policies that came out of the 306s that we had a quick turnaround. So, you know, as I said, I think these conversations will continue to happen as we go forward with these policies and then as we look to see what does mastery of material mean at the Lebanon School District.
So, and again, I don't want to dive too down, down too deep in this, but, you know, we do suffer at times and these are the things we talk about as an administrative team at our coordinators' meetings and a little bit with staff when it's, when it's relevant to do so, about what, what, what grade inflation is, what it looks like, does it exist? Reassessment, how many times should a student have access to bettering their grade? Those are all good and reasonable discussions to have. I think we do that thoughtfully. I think we did that a lot last year. Just for example, you know, we have 70% of our kids make honor roll. I think that's good. I think we work hard to make sure that they're prepared for the initial assessment. Most of our students are. A 3-6, which if we all recall, students who we went to school who had 3-6s, they were at the very top of their class more often than not. A 3-6 puts you 51st out of a class of 144. Very good GPA, but it puts you essentially in the top third of your, just outside of it, actually, of the top third of your class. What does that mean? We don't know. That's just data for you. So a lot of our kids do very, very well and I think there's, there's a reason for that. So it's a, it's a good discussion to have. I think it's worth bringing up strategically throughout the year and we're happy to come to the Ed Committee and continue those discussions.
And once the Ed Committee has made decisions on what constitutes mastery, the Policy Committee will codify.
That's it. That's it.
After you get your graduation requirements updated.
We have a lot of work to do.
All right, thank you. All right, any other discussion around the LHS Updated Language Program of Studies? No? Okay, well, I need a motion, don't I?
I do.
All right, can I have a motion to accept the LHS Updated Language to the Program of Studies?
So moved.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion by Joe and a second by Leila. We will roll call. Leila?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Lil?
Yes.
Ash?
Yes.
It passes unanimously. Okay, moving on to the next thing, the NHSBA Delegate Assembly.
Sure, I just included it in the packet as for information. The National Hampshire School Board Association Delegate Assembly is coming up on October 4th. We can, Lil, we can maybe plan for our next meeting and if people can look at it, it's an opportunity to, Tia's done it a couple times, so it's an opportunity...
And I'm willing to do it again, yes.
To get together and put forward some resolutions and things like that.
Yeah, if you need a second, I'll go again. That was an interesting experience.
So everybody is invited. We have to send one voting member and then one alternate that are designated as voting member and alternate and we authorize them to vote on our behalf, but everyone is invited to attend. It is an interesting experience to do and we do like to have people who haven't done it before, at least one of those alternate or delegate be someone new just because we want to have everybody have a chance to experience it. So yes, we can talk about it at the next meeting in more detail.
Sure, and, and we watch our emails from the school board associations because they will send out the resolutions, which we will bring forward to this committee to give guidance to our representative and our delegate about how we want to weigh in on some of these topics from across the state.
Is this available on Zoom if you are not the alternate or the in-person person?
I don't remember it being available and it is down on the con, on the weekend. It's a long day. They do provide a lunch, kind of. They, they offer crudités. So maybe bring...
I packed my own lunch last year and that was a good idea.
But yeah. I anticipate it's going to be kind of exciting resolution time, especially with the legislative session from last year and... I would, I would agree and I am willing to go. I don't need to be a representative, but I do have a lot of points of contact that for any new members, I would be happy to introduce you to other board members throughout the state. I know will be there, so help you network a little.
I do kind of want to go simply because last year I recognized there were a whole bunch of really poorly worded resolutions that would have done the opposite of what they were trying to get done and I had to intervene a couple of times, so happy to provide that service again if necessary.
Okay, and we'll discuss that more next time when Lil is here. Okay, so we don't need a motion on that, right? Nope, that was just for information purposes for you.
All right, so I will open public comment back up per policy BEDH. Is there any public comment in the room? Does not look online.
If you are online and would like to speak for public comment, please raise your hand. There is no public comment online.
Okay, moving on to committee updates. Do we have an update for...
Sure, we met on finance and facilities on Monday and we went over, CIP got feedback for that, talked about projects, talked about buses, talked about budgets. Am I forgetting anything else, Kevin?
Talked about John's beautiful spreadsheet.
John's beautiful spreadsheet. Absolutely, and we set our next meeting for September 16th at 4:30 and I believe it's a Tuesday.
Okay, sounds good. All right, policy, do you have an update for us, Ash, beyond what we just discussed?
No, our next meeting is September the 8th and we have, once again, many things to discuss, so we're putting together the, we're putting together the agenda for that one shortly.
And I, I'm hearing our fall policy update should be here within two weeks, so it'll be another close timeline for that, so we'll have to discuss that as well if we need to add an additional meeting to catch up with what the state is sending us.
Yes, and I would very much like to see if we can make some progress on the booster policy.
I'll put that in my notes.
We'll work on it.
Thank you.
Education Committee is meeting September 11th at 12:00 PM. Do you have a PNN update?
Oh, yes. In lieu of John, we met on the 14th to review and discuss the LSS collective bargaining agreement and to discuss the upcoming negotiations with our attorney. The next meeting is September the 10th at 5:00 PM at LMS.
Okay, and Carrie did SWAC meet recently? They met before, okay, so their next meeting is September 4th at 12:00 PM. HACTC, any updates?
We haven't met this year. Our first meeting is October 1st at 12:00 PM.
Okay, is that the same for the area committee?
Yep, the area committee first meeting will be October 21st at 6:00 PM. I'll keep going. The task force with the school district and city, we're still waiting on a meeting. I did reach out to the mayor, but I believe they're waiting for the new city manager to begin.
Sounds good, and I will provide the housing task force update for John in his absence. The consultants are pulling together focus groups. They've been pulling out surveys and they have had almost 300 responses so far. This meeting was really focused on presenting their fiscal impact model assumptions, which might be important. Tim, they will give us a presentation with more detail for you in the future. They report estimated education costs for the Lebanon School District to have an incremental cost per pupil of $21,000 with a sacrifice ratio per unit as it relates to the school district as a single-family homes being 22%, townhomes and condos being 26%, multifamily units being 16, with the Lebanon School District ratio being 62% based on the school year 25 budget and omitting state funding and grants. The final draft of this presentation will be emailed in the coming weeks and it can be forwarded on to the district. All right, the next meeting is September 15th at 8:15 AM in City Council Chambers. Do we have any future agenda items, board member recommendations or questions?
Yeah, I just wanted to say congratulations again to the high school on getting second in the state. That really does speak highly of all the good work that goes on there and I just wanted to acknowledge that again at the end of the meeting because I think we can't say it enough that they're, they're doing good work.
Yes, good job, everyone.
Thank you, and just as a friendly reminder, in September, we will have school-level presentations, so our next meeting, the middle school and high school will come to present their, their board goals, sorry, their building goals to you, the board, and they will share their class sizes with you and the elementaries will follow at the second meeting. And then going into October, I've asked Colby Price, who is a director of adult education, to do a brief presentation for this board as well to get an update on adult education and then you should have heard from the entire SAU leadership team.
Sounds great. All right, so the next school board meeting is September 10th at 6:30 here at LMS. We have no other business, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and no non-public. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All right, Joe moves at 7:59 PM. Do I have a second?
Second.
Leila seconds. All right, roll call vote. Leila?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Kevin?
Yes.
Lil?
Yes.
Ash? Ash?
Yes.
Okay, the meeting is hereby adjourned.
7:59 PM.
Thank you.